Okay, if I could have your attention, please.
I'm on my own, is that how that goes?
Yeah.
All right. We're here at Town Hall in the town of East Bridgewater, 175 Central Street. This is the large meeting room on the second floor. We're going to open the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board at 7:00 PM on Monday, the 18th of July, 2022. I'll declare the meeting open at this time. Currently present are regular board members, Sherry Bates, Rob Ken, Edward O'Leary, John Lawler, Kevin Riley, and myself, Roy Gardner. So there's six of seven regular members present tonight. We don't have minutes available at this time. I'm going to work with the office for the next week or two to improve the format of our minutes going forward. So that is currently in a work in progress. Second item is a continuation of a hearing from May 2nd, 2022, which isn't scheduled until 7:15 PM. So in the meantime, before we get to 7:15 PM, I'm going to ask the board to look at a couple of other things. One of them is a plan, it's a Form A plan for a piece of land that comes off a, let's call it a driveway, that has a name, Castle, I think it's Castle Place, in the Form A. One of the things we've noticed in the Form A, based on some advice from zoning enforcement officer, Patrick Franny, is there seems to be some conflicts with several different deeds related to that piece of land. It's the piece of land that used to be the primary house of John Ritter that's just, let's say, northwest of the golf course, the Ritter Golf Course. So what I'd like is a vote recorded, a motion seconded, and then a vote recorded to forward the package to Town Council, ask him to review that, to give us some advice as to what we should be doing with that.
Make the motion.
So we have a motion, Riley. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So that's a second, Lawler. And I don't want to get too detailed right now because it's fairly complicated, but simply say that there seems to be some conflicts and meets and bounds between deeds that were previously recorded. The most current deed, which seems to reflect the meets and bounds on the plan that's been submitted, although the plan that's been submitted has not been endorsed at this point. So I believe we need some advice from Town Council as to where we need to go with that. So that being said, I'll ask for a vote on the motion to forward that package to Town Council for some advice. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as six in favor and none opposed. I'd also like to get a motion recorded that requests that the applicant at this time withdraw the Form A plan from the planning board until such time as we have received some formal advice from Town Council as to where we need to go with that. And I would ask that the motion also include that the chairman will endorse the plan as denied if the applicant declines to either extend the period of time for the approval or to withdraw the plan at this point in time.
So moved.
So that's a motion, Riley. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, O'Leary. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And again, we'll show that as six in favor and none opposed. So another item that isn't on the agenda, but is one of those items that we received some recent information on, and that is that the, maybe the office can advise me the name of the subdivision that Mr. Macy is working on up off of Summer Street. Leila Estates, thank you. Leila Estates, the last house was sold several months ago, based on what I can find in the assessor's office. We are now more than two years in on the formal approval of Leila Estates. So I think the planning board ought to send a letter to Mr. Macy, asking him for a formal schedule as to when he intends to finish the required infrastructure, including finished pavement at Leila Estates. It doesn't appear to be any sign at this time that they're working on putting in the sidewalk and doing finished pavement. I would expect it should be done before the fall, but we're still holding a tri-party agreement with the, what would now be Blue Stone Bank here in East Bridgewater and Mr. Macy. So I'd ask that the planning board request, again through a motion and a vote, Mr. Macy to provide us a schedule which shows the full completion of Leila Estates prior to the end of fall, say, November 1st of 2022.
To provide that or to?
To provide a schedule showing that he will be completed by?
By that date.
By November 1st of 2022.
So moved.
So we got a motion, Riley. Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second there.
A motion, Riley, second, O'Leary. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as six in favor and none opposed. That's unanimous vote of all the regular members present in voting. So on our action and discussion items, under item four down there. Just a quick update. Eric Watson has requested us to release what's approximately $28,000 to $29,000 in special engineering accounts for lonely terrorists. As of right now, we still don't have an official as-bill plan on hand. Is that correct?
Correct. I let her know that.
And he is aware of that, yes? Okay. Let's look at the last bullet item on action and discussions, Victory Lane Streetlights. My understanding is the selectmen have in fact signed an agreement with the, I believe it's National Grid, as to what kind of streetlights we want. And we've been told, this is not part of Knights of States, but I know Mr. Carroll is present. Given that, we've been told, I believe that that'll get taken care of by the applicant. And Mr. Carroll is kind of in charge of that unofficially, I guess, but so we'd like to see that done as quickly as possible so that we can move ahead and hopefully get Victory Lane accepted at our next annual town meeting, if not sooner. Can we look at that 160 Walnut Street? We have a letter, I don't know if everyone has a copy of that letter, but we have a copy for Walnut Street. General description of the Walnut Street is it's a large parcel of land, probably in totals somewhere in the range of 60 acres, in which the Sullivan family has been owners of for many, many years. Francis Sullivan, the father that has passed away recently, it's in the hands of the estate now to be divided. It's going to be divided between multiple members of the family. Because of the way they're dividing it, there's, I believe it's approximately one acre of land, which is currently under Chapter 68, which means they have to offer it to the town prior to being able to take it out of 68 so they can re-subdivide the land the way they've decided to subdivide it. We do have a letter in hand from Mary E. Barry, who's one of the Sullivan family, to David Sheedy requesting that they don't execute, the town doesn't execute their right to purchase that property since it's intended that the entire property remain in Sullivan family hands, albeit under slightly different names. So I think, given that, and the value of the single acre or two of land that's being separated to go to an adjacent parcel, which would still remain in Sullivan family hands in terms of its value to the town for open space, would be, at best, I would offer minimal that we could record a vote to advise the selectmen that the planning board doesn't see any need to execute a potential purchase and sale agreement to purchase that land under the right of first refusal on the Chapter 68, I believe 68 is the right chapter. Is that correct, Kevin?
61A.
I'm sorry, 61A. So I think we could make a motion to that effect, if someone is willing to do so.
So that would be a recommendation to the selectmen that they not exercise the right of first refusal?
That's correct.
On the Chapter 61A. So planning board would make that recommendation?
That's correct.
Make that in the form of a motion.
So we have that motion made by member Riley. Do we have a?
A second.
A second, Lawler. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so if the office could prepare a quick, short letter to the selectmen advising that we don't see any need to execute the potential option to purchase that land. And I'll review that letter before it gets sent to them. Thank you. So I think we're close enough to our agenda time to move on to the Knights of States discussion. So given that, I'll declare the continued public hearing on Knights of States, which is a residential subdivision off of East Street in Brockton. I'll declare that hearing to be open. So I guess we're going to ask, what I would consider, a couple of relatively simple questions here to begin with.
Leave it in the center? Sorry about that.
So two relatively simple questions. We've had discussions with both the DPW, the water department of the DPW, and the public safety deputy chief and the fire department, and we're still really stuck on the water thing. So I'll give you the opinion, the long-term opinion of the planning board on how this has to work.
Okay.
And we'll certainly let the rest of the members chime in, if they feel appropriate to chime in, that number one, while as a matter of principle, the planning board has no problem with having wells on the site, but in the past, we've always required that there be potable public water supply available in the street for every one of the houses within the subdivision. Now, that's a relatively clear request. The rationale behind that is that state case law and the state of Massachusetts Public Health has always ruled that if potable water is not available for a house, that house is effectively condemned and cannot be lived in. So regardless of the market value of the house the day it's sold, if the day after it's sold, a well can no longer be used for public water and there's not a water main on the site, that means the house's value effectively goes to zero. The second part of this is that without a public water main in the street, that means there can't be public fire hydrants off that water main in the street. The deputy chief has sent us an email saying clearly that he is not willing to offer his recommendation for approval on a street that doesn't have fire hydrants in the standard locations per our subdivision rules and regulations. Now, the well problem is a bit of a catch-22 here, and I don't disagree with that, but before we would be willing to approve that, step one, before we'd be willing to approve it with wells, we'd have to know that all of the sites on individual lots had been approved through the Board of Health through a standard test procedure, and that that test procedure has been signed off as not being in a potential plume of either one of the landfills that are relatively close to the rear of that site. I know there's some wetlands in between, but we don't know what happens once you start drawing water from potentially private wells?
Absolutely.
In a small area when you've got two of the largest landfills in southeast of Massachusetts directly adjacent to that site. So I don't see any way to move forward at this time, until such time is resolved, those two issues. I know you've made at least some attempt to have a discourse with the city of Brockton about a potential agreement with the city of Brockton to allow the connection to the water main in the city of Brockton onto the site in which the town of East Bridgewater would then be responsible for how the billing and all those kinds of things work. That's technically not a planning board matter. The billing and all of that actually belongs to the water department in the DPW, but until such time as we could get some kind of agreement from the city of Brockton to supply that water, we don't have any way to make sure there's a pressurized water main in the street at that point.
For the fire issue, for the water connection that you were speaking of originally, whereas even if there was a well, East Bridgewater still wants?
We still need to have a main in the street.
But that, could that be something that an approval is conditioned upon? You know what I'm saying? You could approve the plan and condition it upon that agreement with the city of Brockton? If that was, I mean?
That's theoretically, that's possible. I'd have to wait and see what the majority of the board would be willing to vote on.
I mean, I think it would be easier, because until there's an approved plan, it's all very ephemeral, right? In terms of what we're asking the city even for. But once we have a plan, now there's lots as approval, and you know, we at least have something we can move forward and say, this is what we needed for. Because otherwise?
I don't disagree.
We're aiming at a moving target.
I don't disagree with that.
I think it just makes a lot more sense, and in my head, and I think procedurally just functions a lot more logically, because a lot of the board's concerns, I think we could talk about maybe including some clear conditions, a framework of, you know, following through.
All right, so given all of that, if we back up a couple of steps, that if we can get the approval of the city of Brockton for the water main, then we don't need the wells, and we don't need to worry about whether or not the wells are going to get contaminated or potentially contaminated.
Easily be the path of least resistance. And if you?
Hey, can I just add, just very briefly? It has never been our intention in any way to try to attach a house to any form of contaminated water. Our plan has always been to drill a test pit back there, do water testing up to the Board of Health standards, and see what we get. We have no interest in trying to have sort of a water cleanliness issue.
We don't, we have no question about that, but?
Excellent idea.
We have no question about that, and we have no question on your intent about that, but the problem that's been seen in the past in multiple different areas in New England and the rest of the country is that, once you start pulling seven or eight wells from an area like that, then slowly the groundwater starts to migrate.
Yeah.
And if you get two or three years or four years, whatever it is, into it, and suddenly they start coming up with their quarterly or annual testing, depending on what the Board of Health is going to require, and you've got a problem, we're now in a crisis mode that doesn't have any clear solution at that point.
I mean, I'm just thinking outside the box, trying to address the board's concerns and also address the city of Brockton's concerns. I mean, it could be, it could be, you know, construct a main in the street and leave it, leave the valve shut type of thing, so there's no connections, but the infrastructure's there, if and when that scenario that you're describing, I mean, because it is a, it's a hypothetical scenario, right? I mean, certainly it's a possibility.
Well, I think the valve needs to be open because we need to have live hydrants in the subdivision.
The firefighting issue aside, we're talking about the potable water for consumption of the individual home.
Well, it's the same water main.
It is, but there's two different uses, and in terms of approving it, because of the political implications, I think it might be easier?
To get a fire hydrant.
To get a fire hydrant through than get house water, if we can go in the well, and then have the infrastructure in place if and when it's ever needed, could be revisited. This is a very unique project, it's a very unique location, and it's just, we're trying to, you know, there is a way to do it if everyone starts, you know, putting an O in the water and pulling in the same direction. We're just trying to figure out how that works. So we certainly want to address the concerns, and we have no problem being creative. I think we've shown you, we have no problem being creative with these solutions. But I think all the more reason why it might make sense to try to get something approved from East Bridgewater, so then we have, we have a plan in both municipalities that we can then now start talking about, like, these actual issues.
Yeah.
You know? So the other item, which in my opinion is third or fourth in the priority list, but the city of Brockton in their, I'll call it the remanded approval that came back from the initial appeal, had indicated something along the lines that the residents within the subdivision would have to put up a, or set up a residence operation, and they would have to pay for maintenance of the road indefinitely until the road is accepted. That's not legal in the state of Massachusetts, I think I've said that before.
You have.
Yep. We're not going to fight Brockton in court over that. They can't legally do that under subdivision control. Under subdivision control in the state of Massachusetts, a roadway approved is intended, no conditions, to become a public way. That's what the law says. That's what the case law says. So we're not going to approve a subdivision that requires the residents to indefinitely have to be maintaining the roadway until such time it's publicly approved. The problem we have here is the initial part of that roadway is Brockton's roadway in the city of Brockton. We cannot legally accept a roadway that doesn't connect to a public way. So if Brockton decides to play dirty, and they are playing dirty, in my opinion, based on that approval, because they are not allowed to do that, they cannot legally require the residents to pay for that. A subdivider under state law and state case law is required to pay for maintenance of the road until such time it is accepted by the city or town. Again, no exceptions. The law is extremely clear on that. So we're going to require, as we always do, that the subdivider post a bond. We will start to release lots once the base coat of pavement down and all the other infrastructure is in place. That bond becomes the way to finish that roadway. When that roadway is finished, if the subdivider doesn't finish it and then get his bond back, and we have to finish it, a roadway will be accepted as soon as possible as a public way. If Brockton again decides to be underhanded in how they handle this and refuse to accept their section of the roadway, we're stuck in no man's land. Because Town Council has advised us, is we can't accept a public way that doesn't connect to an existing public way. So the fact that there's 100 x feet or 200 feet of roadway that is in the city of Brockton leaves us in a bad place. So that would have to be another condition of approval, that you as the applicant, who are the primary party affected by this, get that condition removed from Brockton's approval. Because we cannot live with that. And we will not live with that. We've never done that. We have never required the residents of a subdivision that we've approved under subdivision control as part of our approval to maintain the roadway indefinitely until we accept it. Because think of what that says when you, pretty simple, right?
Yeah.
The town has no interest in accepting the road if the residents have to maintain it and pay for it. Well, that's not fair, the way taxes in Massachusetts work. All real estate properties pay the same level of taxes. So that would create over time a second-class bunch of residents in the town where they got to pay for their own roadway, and the rest of the accepted road, it's paid for by the town as part of their taxes. So those three items got to be resolved.
With the latest part, I'm not a lawyer, but they, don't they have a responsibility to accept it because they approved?
Absolutely.
A subdivision plan that says it's a public way?
But they had clear wording in their approval letter that basically says, until it's approved, the residents are responsible for paying for all maintenance and upkeep. That's illegal. The developer is responsible for paying for all upkeep and maintenance.
Accepted, right? Accepted.
Till it's accepted, yeah.
A couple thoughts I have. Certainly, the developer, to address and assuage East Bridgewater's concerns, would agree that they would be responsible, not just for the East Bridgewater portion, but for the Brockton portion as well.
Of course.
That goes without saying. And, you know, like I said, we've asked the city to change their, Brockton's to change their decision, and they wouldn't. But I think that could again be conditioned in the approval?
Yes.
And just leave it up to the applicant, because now we have, again, I don't want to keep using the word ephemeral, but until we have an approval or denial, right? We obviously want an approval. Until we have an approval, then we don't have anything to go off of. And now we can start moving forward with these other issues, talking to the city of Brockton, and, you know, seeking perhaps redress if necessary on this issue, but until there's an approval, it's academic. So I think all of these, we could really work hard and craft some language that the board is comfortable with moving forward, that addresses the wells, addresses the potable water, addresses the hydrant issue, addresses the Board of Health approval on all the wells, and addresses the homeowner maintenance issue regarding the acceptance of the portion of the property, of the road in Brockton, and move forward with the other changes that we've, you know, that Munden Engineering has provided to the board, that I think address all the other concerns. And perhaps, if we could, I don't know if we'd be ready to craft that language tonight.
All right, so let me interrupt for a?
Well, can I ask a question? Would a middle ground there perhaps be some form of communication from this board to the developer making those statements that, you know, these things, or this will not be approved by the town of East Bridgewater until and unless ABC?
All right, so let's do a couple of things, and I apologize for this, but you've been before so many times, I neglected to ask you. If the three of you could identify yourselves for the record, because we are being televised and recorded, so.
My name is Scott Ford. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Ben Carroll, applicant to record.
Gigi Munden, civil engineer.
Okay, thank you. Well, all right, so, and I think Vice Chairman Riley just made a good suggestion, and I was actually going to suggest that, is that, and I know this has been a long time in process, and it continues to be a long time in process, but this is, as you hinted, a pretty unique case.
Yeah. Was I hinting?
So why don't we do this? I would ask you, and I think those are our three criteria. I think everything else is pretty much standard and acceptable the way we've reviewed it so far.
Okay.
So what I'd like you to do is, for the board, but obviously in your own best interest, write a paragraph or two on each of those three items?
Sold.
As to how you think an approval could be written that would condition those in such a way that they could be addressed, keeping in mind the situation you have between us and the city of Brockton, and bring that back to us at our next meeting so that we can theoretically craft a decision. I would, my personal opinion, again, one of the seven up here, one of the six tonight, but one of seven members, my preference would be to approve the subdivision with conditions, but those conditions have to be acceptable to the town of East Bridgewater, and, well, first to this board, but to the town of East Bridgewater. So we'd have to address those three items, because each of those is fairly critical, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think we could absolutely put some language together, and that addresses the board's concerns, and make sure that, you know, mechanisms are put in place, that if and when certain things move forward, they're moving forward addressing East Bridgewater, East Bridgewater planning board's concerns.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's what I'm understanding, Mr. Chair, that you're looking for, and I think that's what the applicant wants to give you, that, you know, we have an approval, and if this happens, then the project moves forward, and if?
So we could certainly craft some language to do that, but?
Let us take the load?
You've been before both sides? You've been before the city of Brockton, you've been before us?
I think we understand what you're looking for.
I think you may be in a better position to put something together that could at least theoretically be palatable with both sides. least theoretically be palatable with both sides.
And just so I'm clear, for the next meeting, the board will obviously want to receive this information before the meeting so it can consider it.
Yes.
Would there be a, would the feedback portion of our program be at that next meeting or would there be perhaps some back and forth on the language prior to the meeting so when we come to the meeting it can be presented?
So, so, so let's simply say the sooner you get it to us, the sooner there's a chance you'd get feedback before the meeting?
Understood.
Okay?
Thank you.
I can't promise, obviously, because I don't know what those dates look like, but.
Yeah. Understood.
So anyone else want to offer anything more here? Feel free.
Mr. Chair, has there been any discussion regarding emergency response, snow plowing, fire response? Who's doing that? How that's going to work?
The entire reason we have the two roundabouts on this one we wrote is so that Brockton equipment can come turn around before they enter East Bridgewater because for some reason they didn't want, God forbid, their equipment go pick up a little bit more snow than they're supposed to. That's why we have this first roundabout and that's how it would be handled. As far as emergency response, like ambulance, fire, et cetera, the fire chief in Brockton said they will most likely get the signals or what it is if somebody calls from here and they will not, not go there.
So they will. They would respond to an alarm.
Yes.
Even though the alarm was signaling from.
Because when it's held or fired, it's a different thing, yeah. I've never talked to a fire chief here, but.
Yeah. Which happens, you know, in all municipalities.
Right.
The nearest station responds. It doesn't necessarily mean because it's a subdivision uniquely positioned as this one is, but just if your house happens to be near the line in Brockton or East Bridgewater, Abington or Bridgewater might be responding or what have you.
I'm with DPW and I have concerns driving through two towns to go plow out seven other houses, presuming that we can get to them.
They concerned you would arrive here before you plowed there.
You lift a blade for 100 feet and then you.
I know we will.
There's no question we will.
There's no question we will.
No question we will. The other problem is that we'd go, they would have to plow the whole thing and then Brockton could come in with their plows and, and put a snowbank at the end of that first cul-de-sac. Because they're not going to, they're going to, they're going to run their plower on the cul-de-sac and leave, which puts a snowbank in the, right in front of the second piece of that roadway, especially if it's a major storm. Because towns don't do this that way. Where towns have these roadways, the other town will plow the whole roadway, somewhere else in town that our town would plow that roadway. That's typically how that's done. It's not done like that. But I don't have a.
So the concern is the roundabout.
Yeah, it shouldn't be there, first of all. It's, you should never have a roundabout in the middle of a through street.
Yeah.
But they've made it clear that's the reason it's there. So that their maintenance vehicles, when they're plowing, can turn around and leave it.
Yeah, and my recollection from those meetings was also, it was a concern of, there are two house lots that are in Brockton and that would, you know, depending on what East Bridgewater decided to do, you know, you could have the two house lots in East Bridgewater with the roundabout. And perhaps there's some discussions with the city to, and again, this might be a good reason why an approval, now that we have something going forward and we can go back to this, say, okay, well now we've got East Bridgewater on board, because we have East Bridgewater on board, we don't need this initial roundabout. I ask them to delete that. I don't know. And I don't want to overstep my bounds in seeing what the city of Brockton planning board would want because it was a difficult process getting out of there. But, go ahead, Jee.
I think the roundabout helps with the change in road width, to be honest with you.
To reduce it, you're right, yeah.
Yes.
That's part of it, yeah.
Safety goes. I'm not a traffic engineer, but.
Yeah, it is now.
Well, let's, let's be a little sane about that discussion. Why does Brockton want a 38-foot or 36-foot wide roadway to feed one house lot in a portion of a second house lot?
That's their regulation. That's their subdivision and roadway.
It's actually wider than East Street.
It's wider than East Street.
By a pretty significant.
It's wider than the street that it comes from by lot.
Correct.
And the street that it comes from has 70 houses on it.
Correct.
Give or take. That's a quick rough count when I drove down. There's roughly 70 houses on East Street.
To respond to your comment of insanity, our hearings in Brockton was not really governed by reason.
I was that one of those, I understand that.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it was, it was heavily governed by a butters, which, I don't mean this in a bad way, but not technical people. So it was, that's why we have all these things.
It was political.
Yes.
Yeah, understood.
I have, to use your word, sort of an issue with granting of, what I would say is, an ephemeral approval. You know, Brockton has given to this point no indication that they're willing to move on some of these things. Is that a fair characterization?
Well, we asked them to change the condition regarding the maintenance of the way.
Okay, so that's, that's the one thing that's been.
That was the one thing, yeah. I mean, perhaps you could have pushed harder, but.
I think it's not an unfair characterization. I think, I think part of the issue is, we haven't even technically been denied some of the things we've asked for from Brockton because we don't have something approved to ask for it with.
Was it requested that, that the width of the roadway, for example, be waved down to?
At the initial meeting when we first re-proposed this.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. The road and, yeah, all of the concerns that this board is bringing to us about what Brockton did were brought to Brockton and this was what Brockton was willing to give us for reasons that are known to them.
I, you know, in fairness, I did understand that. They were very strict about wanting the current width of that road. And I do think to taper the road without having the roundabout is a little odd. That's not to say I think the solution is to build a road of that width from the street back to two house lots.
The roadway width that we would like to see constructed is actually wider than East Street.
That they would like to see constructed, yes.
Or that we would like to see constructed. Our recommended width for a residential roadway is wider than East Street is right now.
Yeah. And I don't know if that means the next time East Street in Brockton gets major infrastructure work done, it wouldn't be.
36-foot wide with sidewalks on both ends.
Yeah, I don't know what the plan is for the city. But I will say to address the, you know, the ephemeral question, I do think it's important to get a decision. I don't think, once the decision comes out of East Bridgewater, I don't think it's ephemeral. I think it's very, it would be very clear and articulated what is required and what East Bridgewater is asking of us at that point. And then that would also be a mechanism to then go back to the city and start having those intermunicipal conversations about these issues.
Okay, so, so there's another, there's another condition that I think would probably be in the approval, but I don't think, I don't think necessarily it would be in your, in your court, so to speak, to write, and that is, that we're going to need some kind of intermunicipal agreement to make it absolutely clear with the city of Brockton who's going to do what in this case.
Yeah. And I think Brockton has that.
Yeah, I think that's on their agenda also.
That's a condition of theirs as well, so.
But I don't, I don't think you need to do anything. I think that's between, between our DPW and Brockton's DPW or whatever they, I think they probably call it DPW and Brockton, I don't know for sure, but. All right, so, so, so given that, and if you could get that back to us as soon as possible, when is our, our next official meeting is in August?
15.
Is it 15?
August 15.
So August 15th is our next official meeting, so the sooner you get to that, the sooner we could distribute it to the members of the board and get some at least preliminary feedback so that we can see where we stand.
We'll put that together right away.
Thank you for your time.
Move to continue the Knights Estates matter to 7:15 PM on August 15th with the.
Excuse me, I have a couple of questions.
Sorry.
For the sake of the stormwater permit, I want to ask if you have any feedback about the, now that we reduced the road to 26 feet wide and then four feet sidewalks? Another one is, we have asked for waivers from the Section 4D, which is the water supply main, and the Section 5B2 for fire hydrants to be more than 500 feet distance. Should we remove those since, based on your comments?
So, to be blunt, to answer your question, I don't see any real issues with the stormwater management part. We will be issuing the stormwater management part as part of our subdivision approval. That's going to be an integral piece of this, so there won't be a separate public hearing on stormwater management. That's part of what we're doing.
Do you have a conservation document for ongoing for stormwater management?
Well, we've agreed that's not how it works anymore at our recent town meeting, so we'll, we'll sort that out with conservation.
Okay, I'm asking so we can, so we can kind of get going with the improved areas and finish the calculation. So if you have any comments about the width of the road and stuff, that would affect.
I don't see any issues with that. The consulting engineer that's reviewing this is the same consulting engineer, the town uses the same engineer now, so I would just simply say that, that there has been some confusion over the last couple of years about who issues stormwater permits for what. Under subdivision control, when there is a subdivision application, the stormwater permit is issued exclusively by the planning board as, as part of that.
Okay.
So there's, there's no question about that anymore and conservation knows that. And that's based on a formal vote that we made at the annual town meeting earlier this year. It actually has been that way all along, but there's, for some reason, there's been some confusion on conservation's side about that.
So.
In terms of the waivers that are requested, I don't necessarily think you need to remove those or modify the application before us, but simply say we're probably going to deny granting those waivers.
Okay.
Until we get the specific answers that are going to hopefully get worked through with the requests that we've got on the table right now.
Right.
Okay?
And infrastructural-wise, the plan looks good is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, from what I can see and from the reports we've had back.
The legal issues that we have to address, yeah.
I don't think we have any issues structurally with, with the primary subdivision control components. It's the, those kind of overriding pieces that are kind of stuck in limbo here. So Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to add to that motion to continue?
No, I just motioned to continue to 7:15 on August 15th with the consent of the applicant.
We have a second to that motion.
Second.
Motion Riley, second lawler. Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as a vote of six in favor and none opposed, actually an unanimous vote of all regular members present in voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members.
Have we already, on 201, 211 Highland Street, haven't we signed all the applicable documents that we need to sign at this point?
Yes, just a follow-up, just want you to know if you've signed.
798 North Bedford Street, which is the Payton property, we have received at least one update, but that's still not the final supplemental, as I understood it, the last I heard, for, for Payton's site plan off of North Bedford Street.
But he had given that to Patrick this week and then, well, last week, he and Patrick
So he did, he did say previously at the, at the last meeting that, that he would put a guardrail in front of that building?
That modified plan is supposed to have a guardrail.
And the plan shows that? So let's, let's keep this on our agenda for next meeting?
Okay.
Because, this just came in. Patrick's response back to him was on, on Thursday. I haven't actually had a chance to talk to Patrick since then and to make sure that he's all set with what's going on there. This was where the, the concern had to do with the fact that because of, because of the progress that they've already made on the site when they've decided to change the use of that building, basically the entrance of that building is at grade, the parking lot is at grade, there was no way to put a raised curb there. So instead of a raised curb with bollards or whatever, they decided to put a guardrail in front of the building approximately four feet off the building to prevent vehicles from both hitting the building and entering the area where pedestrians would be walking in from the parking lot into the building. I think what we decided at our last meeting is we'd leave it up to the, to the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer to, to handle that pretty much. So why don't we keep this item on our agenda for next meeting, which is August 15th? I don't think there's anything that we're going to do that is holding up the current construction at that site, so. All right, has 125 Highland Street actually submitted a revised plan?
Yes.
So that's the plan as we currently have it, the one that's up on the board right now?
There's a little bit of a delay. Time here, 125.
Okay. So I think, I think we've said several times that, that we can't allow that building to be converted to a daycare center without a separate in and out. We cannot have a common entrance, that just doesn't work. That would look too much like the daycare that's over on Route 106 in West Bridgewater. It's an absolute disaster in the morning and in the evening. We have to have a way in and a way out so that people coming in to drop off children at that site can continue around and leave without having to go back through the traffic that's trying to come in at the same time.
So can I just move the gravel to be a U instead?
So we did see a picture of a, of a plan that, that was proposed, I guess, let's call it phase two.
Yeah.
We need something that looks more like that in terms of traffic flow.
And the only reason he said he didn't do that exact U right now is because he didn't, he wasn't sure if it was going to be, if you guys would be looking for a curb cut. There is no curb, so I'm not sure what that language.
We don't really, I don't think that the curb cut isn't really an issue. We got some mixed signals as to why it wasn't done yet and one of those seems to be that the septic system was creating a problem because of the new tanks that were going in? Because they're actually slightly above grade?
They're not.
No.
Okay.
Everything's been already signed off by the town last week. It's all backfilled. The ASBIL for the plans is done. So the only reason why there's a phase two is because we need to tap into the reserve legion field on the septic system. So Larry broke it all up into phases so we could open our doors.
Okay, so, so that's, that's the plan I had seen previously, so we need something like that with an entrance and an exit so that there's one-way traffic?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I for years worked, on a route that I got to work, I went through 106 and saw the disaster at that daycare center in West Bridgewater where they had a single entrance, where the cars were trying to get in and out simultaneously.
So are you familiar with the property?
Yes, I am.
So do you know where the existing telephone pole is?
Yes.
Looking straight at the building?
So essentially our plan is to have, when you're looking straight at the building, to the left of that telephone pole, that would be the out. The existing entrance now would stay the one-way entrance.
Yes.
Would loop around. And we roughly have, from that telephone pole to the property lines, about 15 feet, give or take. So we're looking just to mirror what shows on these plans, it's like the 12-foot entrance, we're just looking to do a 12-foot exit, you know, with, with it kind of getting wider at the end to help cars go right or left.
Radius so that they can go out, yes.
Right, so right there, right where that telephone pole is?
Yes.
That's where I'm looking to have them come out without touching, tampering with the pole or anything like that. We have plenty of room on the property line. So I could even, I could even make that out of the crushed stone for phase one because to get at the reserve for the septic system. reserve for the septic system, you know, it wouldn't hinder just by putting crushed stone down for temporary. You understand what I'm saying?
And that becomes a maintenance problem in the winter, though.
So our plan is to get this all done before the winter and get it paved, blinded.
Okay.
That's our plan. We're waiting on Larry, is what the issue is.
So I purchased the building a year ago, and my lease is up with my current, you know, daycare, like it's already surpassed, and, you know, this has been well over a year right now. So I was just looking for some sort of like grievance or variance to you allow me to put some crushed stone in so I can go in and out, so I can open for September.
I mean, I'll even put down asphalt millings if you want, which is a little more dense than actual crushed stone, you know, I can roll it, and that will compact a lot tighter. That way it won't end up on, you know, Highland Street.
Reprocessed asphalt would be a better interim measure until?
Yeah, I can do that. That's not an issue. And I don't have a problem with doing the full bush, you coming to the left of that pole for Phase One.
I would say as long as there's clear signage that indicates where the entrance is and where the exit is, and that it's one-way traffic, that I think at this point we'd be happy to move ahead. And I know the building inspector and the deputy fire chief, who's our public safety officer in terms of emergency kind of things, fire department and all that, all agree that we need to have a clear flow of traffic through there, where cars don't have to be backing out into oncoming traffic.
Correct.
Am I correct in that the main entrance to this is on the long side of the building?
Alongside?
Alongside.
It is, yeah.
It is. The other thing I would perhaps suggest is that if you have a requirement, apparently of 19 parking spaces, you've got a ton of parking shown on what I assume would be close to the final plan, which seems to involve cars that would necessarily be backing out toward that entrance. So maybe we can get rid of some of that over there, because you don't need it.
So those spots aren't actually drawn up, where we spoke.
Okay.
So those spots are all going to go in at an angle.
Okay.
So, which will allow them, and that's all staff parking, so whoever leaves last is going to be the furthest in.
Okay.
And all the spots aren't going to be parallel parking for easy access out.
And what you don't know is that I will eventually need 45 spots. Phase One is, an occupancy is 75.
Okay.
Phase Two is an occupancy of 125.
Gotcha.
But also those spots, we still have about another 15 feet on our property line that those spots can get nudged over, so they're not going to be as close as they look on that building now, on that plan now. We have a lot, about 15 feet of grass that we plan on shifting everything over, further away from the building.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think.
That was just.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as, Chairman can correct me if he feels otherwise, but I think if you were to get something that's, you know, a little more along the lines of a formal site plan from Larry to us, we'd certainly be happy to work along.
Yeah, so let's get a site plan, an updated site plan submitted from Larry that shows the one-way round through traffic, so that we can have, get that approved on the table and in the hands of both the public safety officer and the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer before September, whenever it is you're planning on trying to get open.
August 4th, next month.
Yeah, whenever, as soon as the plan comes to us, that the building inspector and the public safety officer addresses those issues, we should be able to say okay. Our official meeting isn't until August 15th, but we could certainly advise both the, I mean, we know roughly what it needs to look like.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay?
So you may not have to wait till August 15th. If I get it to you sooner, you could.
We certainly can see what the zoning enforcement officer thinks. I mean, we've had this discussion ongoing for a while.
Yeah. And I also just brought it out that I did connect with Equity, and they did say they could sub-boat parking if need be to get me open. That's just a, you know, Plan B, if I needed to do something with parking to get open.
Some, maybe the employees need to park across the street or something like that?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Peter had hooked me up with them, and they said that they would allow that if I needed to.
All right, anyone else on the board have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Next item is 60 Franklin Street, the request for used car sales to show two decedded spaces So I think the revised plan, as I saw it, is up on the TV, I guess we'll call it on the screen right now, addresses those two or three things we had brought up the last time. It moves the handicap spaces as close to the existing walkway at the front of the building as we can get it. It moves the two sets of spaces to the corners where we asked maybe moved to, I think, previously. So at this point, I don't think I have any further questions or comments. I'll leave it.
I'll apologize in advance for a lengthy motion, but I'll make it, unless there's somebody else that wants to have a discussion.
Anybody else have any questions or comments at this point?
On it.
Okay.
So I'd move to approve modification of the special permit for the property at 60 Franklin Street based on the determination required of the board in Section 5K2E of the zoning bylaws and specifically with the following findings. Number one, the property is located in an industrial district. Number two, property is of sufficient size to support the proposed use and is located in a remote area of the town. Three, there are no proximate residential butters to the property. Four, the property has a history of automotive-related use, specifically the space in question has been used for automotive repair for multiple years. And I would condition that approval on the following. Number one, that the doorway on the northwest side of the premises leading into the garage and office space is closed off unless it's required by code for emergency egress purposes, and if so, that door would only be used for that purpose and marked as such. Two, that the handicapped parking spaces on the site are relocated per the site plan dated April 8th, 2022, and a handicapped ramp be installed as shown on that plan. Three, that the parking for employees working on the premises be designated in the spaces closest to the diesel pumps and canopy. Fourth, that the, or four parking spaces be reserved for use in connection with the sale of used cars. Two, with the southwest corner of the building as shown on the plan, and then two immediately adjacent to them, that is a change from what's shown. That of the four spaces, two be reserved for customer operator use and two for exterior display of vehicles for sale. That no more than two vehicles for sale be parked on the outside of the building at any one time. That no flags, pennants, or other similar advertising devices be attached to the vehicles for sale. Last, that unless, for purposes of expansion of the existing convenience store and coffee shop that's located on the premises, the 2,600 square foot space shown is devoted to automobile use not be further divided or occupied by additional tenants. I also moved that the site plan dated April 8th, 2022, with revisions to July 2nd, 2022, and potentially allowing for additional revision for the location of the used car parking be approved with the finding that it satisfies the requirements of our Section 13-2.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion from, Mr. Chairman Riley. Do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So we have a second, O'Leary. Further discussion in the motion?
My only issue with it is that, again, I think that it's important to keep those spaces out of the drive-through lane area, and there are still two over there, so I'd rather see them all on the other side of the building where the two have been relocated.
So we want all four of those spaces together at that bottom corner of the building then, right?
Correct.
Okay. Eric, no further. Does the applicant have anything they want to add at this point?
We find that the motion, how you worded it is adequate, what we're using. We're not looking to be a large Nissan dealership or anything of that nature. It's just our equipment or trucks we want to get rid of, or equipment at that time. And it's only one or two trucks at a time, and there's no employees, it's just the owner of the property who would be selling a truck or two at a time.
We have, for the record, can we have a name, please?
Yes, Emile Cetea, representative of ADGA, Malden and Fields. So I believe if we move the two up in the corner down to the building side, more than happy to do so. Whatever would help with the traffic flow, we'll get the board.
Okay. All right, again, back to the board. Anything further? No?
No.
Okay, given that, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the modification to the existing special permit for the property at 60 Franklin Street. Any further discussion on that motion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all six members present in voting. And just to make sure it's clear that this will be appended to the existing special permit, so it's still a single special permit for that site? These conditions will be added to that? Okay?
Can you get a copy tomorrow or?
Well, you can have a copy of that right now if you want one. The actual formal special permit approval letter will come out in the next few days. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Rob, can you slide that down so we can read the rest of that data complied? Okay. Data compiled from, back up a little now. Right there, data compiled from public records, property lines are public record, distances plus or minus by deed. And back to the bottom again, Rob, who actually drew this? Is anybody from Spink Design here?
No.
Is anybody from Spink Design here tonight?
No.
Mr. Chairman, before we go too far with this tonight, could I make two requests of the board? One would be that this matter be scheduled for a noticed public hearing at our next meeting, and two, that the matter be referred to our town council for a determination specifically to the question of whether used car sales is an allowed use by right in the downtown or in the B5 district, or whether a special permit is required. And I'd make those in the form of two separate motions.
Okay, I think we can do that. So can you make those motions one at a time if you would, Kevin?
Sure.
So we can act on them individually?
Yeah, first one is to schedule this matter as a noticed public hearing at our next meeting in August.
So maybe we should ask the second one first?
That we refer the matter to town council for determination as to whether used car sales is an allowed use by right in the B5 district, or whether a special permit is required for that use.
So we've got a motion, Riley. Do we have a second to that?
Can I ask why this was brought, the last first time we were here, about the public hearing?
Well, first of all, technically, it hasn't been a public hearing because we haven't had a special permit application. We're looking at this as a site plan. There seems to be some discussion between several members of the board, as well as the zoning enforcement officer, as to whether or not, after he reads through Section 5, which is the B5 district, whether or not we can be issuing a site plan since it's not one of the allowed uses within the district.
It's not what the building inspector told me. I spoke to the building inspector, he had no issue with any of this.
Well, we have to make a recommendation in the form of approval to the building inspector, and at least one of our members has reread and read and reread that and doesn't see how we can allow an automotive use in the downtown business district.
Well, that was told it was industrial, so.
It's B5, it's B5, actually. It's not industrial, it's, so, that's kind of an important differentiation here. So we do have a motion on the table to ask town council to offer his opinion as to whether or not we would be able to approve this as a site plan approval in the downtown district, or whether or not we'd need a special permit to get an automotive sales use in the downtown district.
Well, we could have done all that prior, the first time I was here back in May, had I known about it. So all of a sudden this came up, whether it's, all this could have been researched in the two, three months, we've been waiting to come back here again.
Yeah, we're not going to have a debate on that. We've got a motion on the table. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second, Lala. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as six in favor and none opposed. Second item, Kevin.
So that was to schedule a matter for a noticed public hearing at our next meeting on August 15th, assuming we have the response from town council in advance of that.
Okay, so a couple of things with that. First of all, a site plan approval is an advisory opinion offered by the planning board. Doesn't meet one of the three criterias we have to have a noticed public hearing. When you say a noticed public hearing, I'm assuming you mean we have to notify butters and having that advertisement. We can certainly have an additional agenda item, but if we don't need a special permit, then we're not authorized under state law to require a noticed public hearing.
I defer to you on that. I don't necessarily, I think under our bylaws, we do have that opportunity, but I'll defer to you.
So what I would like to do is, I'd like to slightly modify the second motion, and that is, we need to have that site where the meets and bounds survey done, because we've got a major issue here that keeps cropping up when we go through the assessors' records.
Which is what?
And that is that the piece of land behind that, which is supposed to be 50 feet wide and abuts the post office between you guys.
Yeah.
Doesn't fit if you take the dimensions of the post office site, which was fully engineered and surveyed, and you take the perimeter dimensions of Union Street, which we have some meets and bounds on for Union Street from the town, that piece of property doesn't fit in between those two if the railroad right-of-way is 50 feet wide, which is shown to be on the railroad right-of-way deed. There's something missing there. And it's kind of a, that's why when I first looked at this plan, I noted that it's a compiled plan, it wasn't surveyed. Even though there's some, the meets and bounds that are, I assume, come from the meets and bounds out of the town deed for the roadway, because there's at least one meets and bounds right on the edge of Union Street.
So where they pull the numbers apart, all the numbers on the property, they can just pop up? I mean, this is what was engineered.
It says it's compiled, that says, they put a whole bunch of stuff together and tried to figure out what those numbers were. They didn't survey it. Compiled plan's not surveyed. Because if you take the meets and bounds on Union Street, add in some of those distances from Union Street back, add 50 feet to the railroad right-of-way, you're onto post office property. If you work backwards from the post office, that back line isn't there.
Right.
That back line's over here somewhere.
So the building would be on the railroad, wouldn't it?
It appears it may well be. That's why we need a surveyed plan.
Train's still headed, it's still there, it's been there forever.
Well, the railroad hasn't been operating for at least 45 years that I've been in town.
No, that building's been there for 45 years.
Layout's 50 feet, not the tracks, you know what I mean? The layout's 50 feet.
The layout's 50 feet, the tracks are...
The what?
Yeah.
Yeah, the tracks are only, what, 12 feet, 10 feet, something like that?
This piece could still be on the railroad layout. The tracks would be over here somewhere.
I mean, this building dates back to the Eastern State Steel, which the trains went through to Eastern State Steel, the building didn't get hit. So what's my next step now?
Well, we need to hear back from town council, but what I'd like to have happen is our second motion on the table, and I'll make the motion, is that require that to be a plan, on-the-ground survey plan, that shows actual meets and bounds for the entire property before we can go further.
I'll second that.
So that's a motion, Gardner. Was that you, Kevin, that said second, Second Riley? That we have a surveyed plan, clearly delineating the meets and bounds for the entire perimeter of the property before we move forward. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote, as six in favor and none opposed. All right, Ellen, what else? Is there other stuff we're supposed to be doing tonight? I think that's got everything on the agenda, right?
We started at the bottom, then we opened up at 7:15, and then we worked our way down.
Yeah, I took a couple of those bullet items on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
So just for your benefit, Candy, the way we have to do this is that we post an agenda. The major items on the agenda are always posted with a time to try and let abutters and the participants that we're going to, especially public hearings, those have to be posted with a time. The bullet items, action and discussion items, we basically can put those in any time we have a break in which we have to wait for another later agenda item which has a time assigned. The general rules are, we can start any item after its posted time in the agenda. We're not allowed to start before the posted time in the agenda. And if they're general items, like the ones on the bottom, we can take those to fill in spaces in between. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, any other members of the board have any questions or comments at this I guess, hearing no further items for discussion, we could entertain a motion to adjourn?
Do that.
We have a motion, Lala. Do we have a second?
Second.
With the gavel. Hey, go!
Kenny out the door.
A motion, Lala, Second Ken to adjourn. We'll call it 8:12 PM. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll show that as a...
Go!
Section 9...
He likes that.